Welcome to the city. I'm Anthony Wilson, the Public Information Officer for the City of San Angelo. And joining us today for the whole episode is our City Councilwoman from District 6, Billy DeWitt. And as you can tell, we're in a different sort of setting today. We are in the new HEB on Sherwood Way, and we will get to why we're here a little later in the interview. But first, Billy, thank you for being with us.
Thank you for inviting me.
Now, obviously, you were elected this past July, after runoff election, to your seat in District 6, elected to a four-year term. Why did you want to run for the City Council? What moved you to do so?
I'm always interested in what's going on around me. And I started to pay more attention to city government and the issues that we're facing. And my husband and I started attending city council meetings. And when there was an issue that I had an interest in, I was always up to the mic, speaking up a little bit. And several people, after I expressed some opinions, said, "Well, you know, you really ought to run for city council." And I thought, "Oh, no, that's not for me. I am not going to do that." But when Charlotte Farmer filed to run for mayor, my husband started to, you know, mention it more often. And then other people who have been city council people before, you know, kept encouraging me. So finally, I just took the step and filed to run, and here we are.
You know, you were kind of unusual in the fact that a lot of people will run for city council. Having never actually attended a meeting, and like you said, you attended many meetings, and you spoke at times about issues that you felt strongly about. How much you think that that has helped you, just sort of knowing the landscape, at least, of a city council meeting?
Well, it has helped in the respect that I know a little bit about the procedure. But when it comes to actually being the one sitting on the podium, making decisions that impact people's lives, it's very different than coming up to the podium, you know, speaking my opinion.
How so?
Well, you just feel the weight of the responsibility of the actions that you have to vote on and how it might impact people, not just in your district, but the entire city of San Angelo. And in most instances, you're not necessarily going to be able to make everybody happy or everybody's going to be happy with the decision you make. So that's the heavy burden that I feel. And I can tell you, sometimes, depending on what the agenda is for city council, I wake up at 2:00 in the morning, you know, agonizing over, you know, what my vote should be. Because I'm the one that has to look at the woman in the mirror after I make a vote on an important decision that impacts our citizens' lives. And I take the responsibility very seriously.
So when you ran for office, were there specific issues or goals that you were wanting to address?
I have a servant's heart, Anthony. And I wanted to be of service to my community. I felt like I wanted to be able to give back a little. So when I started to campaign, I started to think about the issues that impact me and my family. And if I think about things like that and then listen to what other people say, then I think it makes a difference. For instance, water resources, that is near and dear to my heart. I feel that if we don't continue to assess our water situation and look for opportunities to increase our water resources, that a lot of the other things we want to accomplish, they just may not be as successful if we don't have adequate water supplies.
So as you were campaigning and talking to and listening to voters, what did you hear from them? What were the things that were important to them?
I have to tell you, honesty and fairness in our processes, accountability and transparency, and responsiveness. I heard more than once, I heard lots of times in fact, that sometimes our citizens in District 6 felt underrepresented. And they were just interested in knowing that whoever represented them would be a good listener, an attentive listener, and that they would take their concerns to heart and try to work on those. So in the five, six months that I've been doing this, every time I get a call, I try to respond to it so that, you know, they know that I do care what's going on and that I do want to represent them well. And one other thing that I heard about was, in addition to the accountability and transparency, is that they want me to vote on protecting the integrity of the residential communities in District 6.
So obviously, you know, you guys face a lot of issues that are either specific to your district or maybe have some more commonality for our community. How do you weigh what's best for your district versus what's potentially best for the community at large?
Well, it's a lot of soul-searching about how it would impact all of us. Because we in District 6, we are part of the whole, and so we certainly want to see it that way. I think one of the things about San Angelo is that the different districts are a bit unique. District 6 is different than District 1. So I think most of the issues that the citizens in District 6 may be concerned about may not be the same issues that the folks in District 2, Tom Thompson's area, are concerned about. So certainly, we have to give it thought. Will there be any adverse impact on other districts and what's going on there? But I think that's kind of the different personalities and makeup of the different districts make a difference in the decisions and how we reach those decisions.
So you sort of led into a question I was going to ask later in the interview, which is, we sometimes hear, District 6 is the southwest part of the city, and we sometimes hear that the southwest part of the city gets preferential treatment when it comes to city services. From your perspective, is there any truth to that?
I don't think so, Anthony, when it comes to city services. I know that, of course, I live in District 6 now, but I was born and raised in District 4, Lucy's District. And so I still have a heart for that area. So for instance, when the roadwork, the major roadwork started on Martin Luther King, you know, Boulevard, I was just as joyous as any roadwork being done on Sherwood Way because it was much needed. And that's an area that I attend church in. I attend community meetings in that area. So when it comes to city services, I don't think that District 6 gets preferential treatment. And I think that perception may be born because the city seems to be growing in the westerly direction. And so maybe that's what drives that perception, but I have not seen it or felt it.
So obviously, the infrastructure here is newer than it would be in older parts of town, and maybe that leads to that.
Maybe so.
Describe what the learning curve has been like since you took office.
Anthony, I have to share a term with you that one of my fellow city council people said, "It's like drinking from a fire hose." And it has been. You know, I'm not served on a lot of city boards. I've served on community boards. So after the runoff election, I mean, the election was on Saturday, July 8. I got a call at 9:00 Monday morning, July 10, saying I needed to be at a meeting at 1:00 at Goodfellow Air Force Base. So it started that way for me, and it's been that way ever since. It's, you know, it's, things have come at me fast and furious. But one of the things that everybody's been so helpful in sharing information and, you know, helping me walk through things. So it's been a steep learning curve, a fast learning curve, but I've had some outstanding support in learning quickly.
So have you encountered anything that you think is a particularly thorny thing to learn? Whether it's how city government works versus some big issue that the city is dealing with?
How people feel about zoning issues and the planning commission and the decisions that we have to make. It really does drive some intense discussions. And knowing what to do, how to do it, and what decisions to make that represent the best interest of my district and other districts has been, you know, really important and kind of a thorny issue.
How long do you think it will take? You've got a four-year term. How long do you think it'll take before you feel totally comfortable in the job?
I think the learning will be continuous. I don't think I will stop learning. But I'm already starting to feel comfortable, especially with the team that I'm working with, the mayor and other council members. And that's because I believe that we have mutual respect for each other. We have common interests, and we have shared values. So everybody, you know, reaches out. And let me just give you an example. There was a situation going on in my district, and Rick Wise and John James picked me up at my house and drove me around so I could see firsthand what the issue is and that I could think about the best way to address that. So that's the kind of efforts that have been made to reach out to me so that it enhances my learning curve because people are so willing to be helpful. So even though, you know, I'm going to be learning a lot in a short period of time, I'm already starting to feel pretty comfortable in this role, and I'm enjoying it. Not the thorny issues and not the tough decisions. I can't say I enjoy that, but I'm enjoying the job and representing the people and feeling like I'm giving back and serving others.
So tell us three things that you hope to accomplish during your term.
Well, as I mentioned earlier, I have a real passion around increasing our water resources. Back, I believe it was in 1972, the council at that time had the visionary foresight to purchase the water rights at Hickory. So I certainly hope we can continue in that, you know, what is that, 35 years ago? And I don't think we would be in the, as good a shape as we are right now if that council back in 1972 hadn't thought to do that. So water resources, you know, are something that I want to continue to pay attention to. Our city's infrastructure, I certainly want to keep our eye on the ball there. I know that, you know, we're looking at replacing water mains. We're looking at, you know, reconstructing roads. So we have to keep our eye on the ball. Public safety is another thing that I sometimes hear about through Facebook. And I'm on a site called Nextdoor Upper Bluffs. And so I have an opportunity to see what some of the concerns are around public safety for our citizens. And that's certainly something that I want to make sure we continue to pay attention to.
So let's talk about some of those things because you've noted some things that are obviously high priorities for the city. Starting with water, the city has done a lot in developing the Hickory Aquifer and pursuing other water resources. What more do you think can and should be done on the front when it comes to water?
Well, I think we've done a good job in that area up to this point. So we are part of the West Texas Water Partnership. I think we have to continue fostering that partnership so that we can continue to look for water resources. The council is considering a project that's going to look at our best opportunities for increasing our water supply so that, you know, 50 years plus, that was one of my campaign initiatives, that I would like to see this council, over this four-year period, develop a solid plan to address our water needs for at least the next 50 years.
When it comes to streets, obviously, the city council, the previous city council has approved a 10-year, $80 million plan to rebuild San Angelo's worst streets. We recently completed the third year of an eight-year cycle of preventative maintenance for all of our streets, and a new asphalt recycler has been deployed in order to help smooth some streets that don't really require reconstruction. Is there anything more that you think can and should be done when it comes to improving San Angelo streets?
I think we're doing the right thing right now. I think, again, the foresight that the previous council had in approving this 10-year, $8 million project, certainly in the right direction. I think we have to continue to monitor that and maintain it and make sure that we are paying attention to all of the seats, uh, streets, I'm sorry. And, you know, all of our roadways in San Angelo. So I just think, again, we have to continue to monitor, make adjustments where needed, but keep up the work we're doing. I think we're on the right track.
You mentioned about public safety, and so the 2018 city budget, which took effect on October 1, holds the line on spending with three exceptions: more firefighters, more police officers, and pay raises for city employees. Why did you support the proposal to add firefighters and police officers?
When we listened to Chief Dunn and Chief Carter's presentation to the council, we heard very clear, concise facts on why they needed an increase in their staff. Chief Carter, you know, says overall, right now, to be in line with law enforcement statistics, he needs more officers. We couldn't add as many as he needed at one time, but he brought forth a proposal, a very reasonable proposal, I thought, that said, "If I can have five additional officers, you know, in this next year's budget, then that will take us partway to where we need to be." And we just have to continue to pay attention to that. Chief Dunn, what he shared with us was that in some instances, because of the limited resources, both in equipment and staff, you know, they would have to pull someone from one area to support another area. Well, we want all of our citizens to feel, if they have an emergency, that there will be a quick response, as quick as we can make it. And so he needed additional firefighters, additional equipment, and it was the right thing to do for the citizens of San Angelo.
As I mentioned, the third thing that the city increased spending on, or the city council increased spending on this year, was pay raises for firefighters, for police officers, and for civilian employees. Why did you think that was an important move?
Anthony, I feel that our city employees, our city staff, the most valuable resource we have. If we didn't have our 900-plus folks doing the job that they're doing and doing it really well, I believe that our city staff is dedicated, they're committed, and I think that we need to recognize that. We need to be able to show our appreciation. I would love to have been able to do more. But of course, we have a finite revenue stream coming into the city, and we have to make it count where we can. So I just thought it was important to recognize people for the work they do. And hopefully, as we continue with economic development initiatives and everything, that we can increase our city coffers so that, you know, so that we can do as much as possible. We want salaries to keep up with other people that we benchmark off of. So that's why I thought it was very important for us to address and give salary increases to our employees, to recognize the work they're doing and to, as we benchmark off other cities, to make sure we're paying people a fair and livable wage. I grew up in human resources. And as I grew up and progressed, and then when I became responsible for the entire HR department staff at three different Johnson &amp; Johnson locations, I know firsthand the importance of recognizing and taking care of employees.
And so other than more firefighters, more police officers, and pay raises, why was it important to limit any other spending increases just to those three items and sort of cap all the other expenses where they were?
Well, when Tina Durski made her presentation on, you know, the budget for...
And you're talking about our finance director?
Our finance director, yes, thank you. She made a very good presentation, and she had really done most of the work for us. As we reviewed that and we realized that we were going to be able to provide the city services and not increase our budget in certain areas, I was happy to do that. So, you know, I think we took care of what we needed to take care of. And if we can hold the line and continue to build up our discretionary budget fund, reduce our debt, I would love to see that. That would be a goal of mine as well. I didn't mention that earlier, but I would love to be able to pay down the city's debt and to be able to not increase people's property taxes.
Well, and that leads perfectly into what I was going to ask you about next. Of course, part of holding the line on spending was also holding the line on the property tax rate at 77.6 cents, where it's been the last four years. What factored into your decision to hold the line when it came to the property tax rate?
Well, I was just thankful we were able to do this. But may I tell you a little story?
Certainly.
When I was campaigning and knocking on doors, and believe me, I knocked on a lot of doors and made a lot of phone calls, but I knocked on a door and a young man came. And I could hear a baby making noises in the background, and I could hear another adult, and I assumed it was the wife. She never came to the door. But when I introduced myself and why I was there, the first thing almost out of his mouth was, "Why is the city raising my taxes?" So then I got an opportunity to go into the spiel that the city was not raising the taxes, that in fact, the Tom Green County Appraisal District was doing reappraisals of values of the homes in San Angelo. And so he understood that. So I was glad I had an opportunity to, you know, correct that notion. But then he told me, he said, "You know, if my property taxes..." They'd been in their home two years. He said, "If my property taxes continue to go up at the rate they have this year", he said, "we're not going to be able to stay in our home beyond another two years." He said, "And then we're going to have to sell it and move into a rental somewhere." He said, "We're just not going to be able to afford it." And that story stuck with me, Anthony. So I was so glad that we were able to hold that tax rate, and I certainly hope that in coming years, we're able to reduce that rate. If we continue on with the plans to pursue businesses expanding, getting more businesses into San Angelo so that we increase our tax base, then that young man and his family, hopefully, will be able to stay in their home.
One of the city council priorities has to do with streamlining development services, and that's why we're sitting here in the new HEB. It is in your district. And so you were involved and part of the development process there towards the end. How did you think that the process went, the development process went, in working with the community and with nearby residents when it came to building, you know, a really big commercial venture like this?
Well, Anthony, it was really interesting because even though people knew that this was commercial land here, nothing other than Chick-fil-A had happened in the way of development in this area. So when they started the earth moving and the construction for this, I started to get many calls about the adverse impact that, you know, this construction was having on the residents. And people were saying, "I'm putting my house up. I'm for sale. I'm moving out of this area. I didn't expect this, and here's what's happening." So I think those were part of the growing pains. And, you know, construction is messy. Things, and we had, you know, a couple of town hall meetings, and that was when Charlotte Farmer, the first town, first two town hall meetings, I believe, happened when Charlotte was still the councilperson for District 6. But I had a council meeting right before the opening of, I had a town hall meeting right before the opening of the HEB, and people were able to start to see that it was going to get better. So development, anytime you're, you know, doing new construction or expanding, sometimes the growing pains of it are not too pleasant, but once it's done, it all works out okay. So I know that HEB worked really, really hard, especially with the residents on the street right behind the store, Drexel, knocking on doors and making sure that any concerns people had were being addressed, that could be addressed. When we had that last town hall meeting before the official opening, we had several residents that came forward with concerns about, you know, truck traffic, traffic in the area, would it be going through the neighborhoods? I've not heard a thing since they opened, so I think everything is, you know, settling down, and people are feeling good about having this in the neighborhood.
You know, a lot of people will grouse about where a particular business is built. And so for instance, we heard some complaints about, "Why are you?", as if the city was building an HEB. "Why are you building an HEB on the southwest part of the city as opposed to any other part of the city?" What is the role that city government plays in determining where businesses locate?
Well, I think it's a very limited role that the city government plays. I think certainly zoning is a city-driven initiative. I think permitting, that's needed to, you know, build anything new is certainly needed. And I know that there are instances where businesses need a resolution from the city in order to qualify for tax credits. I won't get into that whole process. But as far as I know, those are probably the three main things that the city is involved in. Now, if you talk to any realtor, when they're looking at commercial operations going, they tell you it's all about location, location, location. Businesses are in business to be successful. So certainly, they are going to scope out the landscape and see where they think they can be the most successful in an area. So it's not driven by the city. It's driven by, you know, the business owner or some business looking to expand and all. But, you know, sometimes the city gets blamed for a lot of stuff, and, you know, you just want to stand up and kind of say, "It's not the city. It's not the city."
I hear you. Mayor Gunther has made economic development the centerpiece of her platform and her service. What has San Angelo done right, do you think, in luring and creating more jobs in our community?
Well, I think our City of San Angelo Development Corporation, our Chamber of Commerce, our partnerships with Goodfellow Air Force Base, and our educational institutions and all, I think all of those partnerships work well and enhance our opportunity to draw businesses to San Angelo. In my short term on the council, there have been no less than five businesses looking to come to San Angelo or expand in San Angelo. They've come before the council, and they talk about the attributes of San Angelo and what they, how they think, you know, locating or expanding in San Angelo will really enhance their business. And I just think we have to continue to look at, what are those best class practices that we can implement to continue to foster that type of desire for businesses to come to San Angelo and expand? So I think we're really, as a city, on the right track to do that. And, you know, San Angelo is a warm, welcoming community. I've heard that more and more as I've sat on the council, and it really is. And the citizens of San Angelo care about, and they want this community to continue to thrive. So I think it's the partnerships that the city have developed with our community that really makes San Angelo an attractive place to do business. And I think the council is in line with the mayor, that we want to continue to foster those kinds of relationships and develop opportunities in San Angelo that makes San Angelo attractive to businesses so that we can have that economic development that we seek.
You mentioned one of the tough parts of the job of being a city council person is disappointing citizens who come to the council and they're very passionate and inflamed about a particular issue. What are the factors that seem to stoke citizens' passions on any given issue?
Well, certainly how it will impact them and their sphere of where they live, how they live. Will it have any impact on them? So are their neighbors, are their children, are their families? And, you know, I think they come, citizens come to the council with issues that directly impact them. And, you know, once we can get through sometimes the emotion of whatever the issue is, I think we come together when we start to reason together and have an opportunity to look at it from all sides because there are always more than one side to any issue. And sometimes there are more than two. There are several. So I think that how it will impact me is, you know, what stokes our citizens' passion around whatever issues, you know, they're bringing forward. You know, at yesterday's council meeting, and I know you had a chance to observe some of that, but we had two issues that were critical, the citizens were passionate about, that lived in that area. One was short-term rentals, and, you know, the other was the improvements to the sewer lines in the Santa Rita area. And, you know, that was impacting or going to have an adverse impact on those folks' lives as they perceived it. So it was, it was a tough situation to work through, but that's what we have to do. And we're all reasonable people. And like I said, we want to do right by our citizens, and we want to have a good community.
What do you like about serving on the city council?
Well, serving the people, the citizens of San Angelo, and having an opportunity to get to know more about city government. I'm a naturally curious person. I have this natural curiosity about what makes things work. And so I enjoy... And so I enjoy meeting with the city manager, meeting with the departments. You know, a career-long HR professional. So I particularly enjoy meeting with Lisa Marley and her staff on human resource issues and getting, you know, her take on things. So I just enjoy learning what I'm learning and feeling like I'm serving others and helping to resolve some of the concerns that our citizens have.
Councilwoman DeWitt, we appreciate you being with us.
Oh, well, thank you. I'm glad that I was able to do this. And I'm glad that we were able to visit here in this wonderful new HEB.
Yes. So thanks to our friends here at HEB, particularly the general manager here, Nick. And we hope you'll join us for the next episode of The City.